Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Commissioners meeting here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what did they say today? Play them all?
No.
All right, we approve the minutes for the March 17 meeting, approve the accounts payable vouchers, and approve payroll adoption.
Do the entertaining motion, they accept all three of the submitted answers.
Any other questions or comments? All of those in favor say aye. And we're gonna do a little impromptu right here with, she got this in, if I might have this on.
Tammy, you said you wanted to.
Yeah, I'm just here real quick tonight, Lindsay. Just to introduce the new health department administrator, driven by the Health Officer of Board of Health, this is Lindsay Wine. So she's been Bobby Little, Dave Bremer, Bobby Little. So she started this week, she'll be working with me throughout April, I'll be gone April 29th, and she'll have the right, so just brought her by tonight to introduce her to you guys.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good to meet you. Thank you, Tammy.
Oh, please.
Oh. Thought she was gonna get away.
I did, I was just heading out.
Thought she was gonna get away.
Sorry.
The county, aye. And these commissioners, I want to thank you for the job you've done and the professionalism. I know we've worked on a lot of projects.
We've worked on a lot of projects.
A $200000 in professionalism, especially the last two years of COVID, so.
Well, thank you, guys.
Show our appreciation. And here's the flag.
Thank you so much.
Tammy Monroe, in honor of 22 years of dedicated service to county residents, the last 12 years as Director of the Jefferson County Health Department, I'm the Jefferson County Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And that's why I'm here.
I heard you here.
Cindy, you guys did great keeping the flag.
I had no clue. Thank you.
I told her I was on the agenda, she goes, "What are you doing here?" I said, "Well, look at the agenda, I'm on the agenda. Bobby told me to come, I need to stand up and talk."
He did.
And he's like, "What are you gonna talk about?" And I was like, "Money."
I saw where she was on her own, I was out.
You gotta back me up. She said, "I am not. I am done."
You did well.
Thank you.
Okay, we can go now.
Okay.
Well, I think we're out for us.
Excuse me?
Thank you. This is a great one, great, too. Bobby's been up there, but if you guys want to stop by and check it out, she's being tasty.
What are you doing here?
We're glad you can retire.
I'm looking forward to sitting inside with my girls.
Enjoying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girl.
Got me good.
Next up, we have Mr. Rick Stolich.
Yes. This one. Oh, yeah.
I can't handle it.
Didn't get enough praise from his wife for not wearing anything.
Yep.
Just gonna review the cyber. Pretty much the same coverage as the renal as last year, except a few changes, which I will highlight. On the first page at the bottom, coverage G, business income, digital asset. Business income, N-A. Restoration cost, N-A. Reputation, business, N-A. This is the binder that we've got. And then that binder, under that same coverage, G, business income is up to $2 million. Restoration cost, $2 million. Reputation, business, $2 million. Systems integrity restoration, $250,000. And what that was, is where we changed the backup, where Ovation came in, and changed whether or not backup, and they're doing it daily, every 15-minute increments. So by doing that, then, right, or would they add that coverage in? A lot of the deductibles have gone up. And with cyber being new, and with all the claims they're having, they're adjusting and trying to. Went to talking to Randy the other day, guy I work with on that insurance package. Most of it, he said, a lot of the counties and cities are going up four to five times. So the deductibles on liability is $10,000. The only one that is different is the cyber deception deductible is $25,000 now. And then everything else is the same. And like, the big thing was just to get that one coverage back on. And by doing what Ovation is doing, I mean, they weren't even gonna offer us a renewal until we got Ovation in there, I think, and started making some changes, so.
Close call.
Yeah. And we got it to where we could get an April 1 effective date, so we didn't lose any coverage there either.
Thanks for the opportunity.
So I just need you to initial and sign. Right here, where we made that change, to update per minute, we get the coverage back on, I just can't help but guess that there's a decision there. Yourself, just a signature.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks for looking out. Yep. That's all I have. Got toys, I dropped part out of it. Except. All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Angela Russell.
I've not done this before, am I just supposed to stand up here, or do I go up there?
Either place is fun.
Either place. Or in home.
Okay. I don't think we're gonna be able to. Okay. Yarley, Nancy, Perry Payne is the one that has done this, but of course she's moved away. So I am the current president of Pilot Club, so we would like to request the use of the sidewalks to make this whole thing easier. It's basically the same as it's been. Yeah, forever. And we appreciate you allowing us to do it. And I know you probably know that all of the money goes back to you, except for what we have. And the COVID's kept us from doing a lot of the things that we normally do. But getting back in the sort of things.
Yeah. What we've seen throughout the county, people are coming out, so.
Our May is always smaller than a fall one, but we're trying to get ourselves back together again. Been hotter. And we have new members.
That's a good thing.
That's gonna help, because we've been aging out.
We'll bring the people up from the car show.
What?
That same weekend.
Oh, okay.
We always try out there, and they have a ball. Gives women something to do, something.
Yeah.
Seriously.
What's nice to have more than one thing on.
Yeah. They work good together. Okay, I move with that. We accept the proposal from the Pilot Club to close sidewalks and parking spots on the courthouse on the 26th of May after 6:00, and then May 27th through 29th through, and that will end at 4:00 on Sunday. And then in the fall, on September 22nd after 6:00, Friday, and then Thursday, it could be Thursday, 22nd, I'll leave it at that, because I can't figure, 23rd through 25th of September, closing at 4:00 on that Sunday. So we accept the proposal.
Second step motion. Any other discussions, comments? All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Thanks, you're good to roll.
Thank you very much.
That wasn't too hard.
No, but.
You did good.
Make sure you be an old pro at it.
And I'm free to go, right? I'm gonna go to my friends' house.
Yep. Pauline, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
And I brought with me Luke, too, he's one of our flight medics here in Madison, so. Thank you for having us tonight. We are with PHI Air Medical, so we are with the medical helicopter here in Madison. I provide you with a black folder there, and inside the black folder, on the right-hand side, is just a real, on the right-hand side there, there's just a quick presentation that I'll go over to explain what we're here proposing for Jefferson County tonight. We are an air medical program. We do staff all of our bases 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, with a flight medic, nurse, and pilot. In Indiana, we are the largest air medical provider with seven bases, just in Indiana. You guys are fortunate enough that Jefferson County is covered not only with our helicopter that's here at Madison at the airport, but also in Seymour. If you will turn to the fourth page there, we also carry cold blood onboard, all of our helicopters as well. On the page that says countywide coverage, you'll see a map of Indiana. What we're proposing is that the county provide a countywide membership program to all residents of Jefferson County. So what that basically means is if any resident of Jefferson County is flown from Jefferson County or any of the adjacent counties out, we cover the entire bill. So if they don't have insurance, we'll cover the entire thing. If they have insurance, we build the insurance first. Whatever insurance doesn't cover, as far as deductibles, out-of-pockets, and coinsurances, we cover it all. Okay? That way, the resident has no out-of-pocket expenses for their flight. If you're not familiar with how much a flight is, it's catastrophic to most people. Been there, done that? Okay. So, and most people think that their insurance will cover most of the flight, and unfortunately, that's not the case. So even a Medicare patient right now, on average, just in Indiana, still has about a $3,500 to $5,500 portion that they owe. And what we're seeing now, unfortunately, due to COVID, a lot of employers, a lot of residents, their deductibles used to be like $1,500 to $2,500, but employers have had to raise that to kind of recoup costs. So now we're looking at families that have $3,500 to $8,500 of out-of-pocket expenses that they would be responsible for. So it's kind of twofold. So what happens is, if we take care of the deductibles and the copays and the coinsurance, what's nice is, once that family gets the ambulance bill, the hospital bill, ER, surgery, whatever, it shows that they've already met those out-of-pocket expenses, so that resident doesn't have to pay it. So they can now just worry about paying the local hospital, the local ambulance service, their, you know, their bill, instead of having to worry about that. The next page, you'll see where all of our seven bases are just in Indiana. So we have Madison here at the airport, Seymour at Schneck. The one down south is in Evansville, Indiana, and that one, we're actually moving up to DuBois County, hopefully by the end of 2022. We also have Rushville, Green Castle, West Lafayette, and we have Marion up in Grant County. I've kind of given you a service area. If you'll turn to the next page, you'll kind of see, it's not to scale, but it's pretty close, the flight. When I was presenting to Switzerland County, a question that they asked is, is that as far as the helicopter will go? The answer is no. So I'll use our Evansville base as an example. What we've seen with hospitals being on divert, which means they either don't have enough staff, or they're too full of COVID patients, that means we're no longer allowed to land there to bring a patient. So what's happening is, counties cannot use their ambulance services to go as far out of town as they need to, to take a patient to higher level of care, so they call us. Our Evansville base had to fly all the way to Nashville, Tennessee, three times, because that was the closest trauma center for pelvic injuries. So even though Evansville's circle looks like they only go that far, we fly where we need to fly. The next page kind of tells you a little bit different. We have two programs that we offer. So we have the countywide program, which is what we are requesting from you guys for Jefferson County. That means that the county actually covers the cost of all the residents to have the limited coverage. Limited coverage means from Jefferson County or surrounding county. Then we come back in and we offer the residents to upgrade to the national membership. And the national membership just means, if you're flown by us anywhere, wherever we fly, you don't even have to be in that jurisdiction, we do the same thing. We cover your bill, deductibles, out-of-pocket, coinsurance. But that upgrade of $45 per household, per year, is on the resident to pay, and that's their choice, that they choose to do so. You will see on the next page, this is mostly up-to-date, we are adding bases every single year, so there's a couple on there that we're getting ready to open, that are not quite on the map. But that kind of shows you that, you know, even if you're on vacation in one of those locations, and are at a hospital and need to be transferred, you can let them know that you have PHI's membership program. And if you have the national program, your bill would be taken care of. Okay? Again, like I said, the residents would have no copays, deductibles, any out-of-pocket expenses at all if they're flown by PHI. We only, we not only do scene flights, but we also do transfers, so if you're at a local hospital, and you need to be flown to higher level of care, we do those flights as well. Like I said earlier, you guys are fortunate enough that you're covered by at least two of our seven. If there was a multi-scene accident and we had to have more than two, because of the size of our helicopters, it is possible that we could have more than two. Also, doesn't matter, when you're looking at the residents of a county, we don't look at who has insurance, who doesn't have insurance, what kind of insurance, it's just, all the residents are covered. Okay? And I've been asked the question of, what if my household has, you know, six or seven people in the household? It doesn't matter, you could have 25. I cover all the Amish and Dadees County, and there are some families that have 16 kids. So it doesn't matter. Whatever the address is, as long as it is in Jefferson County, they're covered. Okay? On the left-hand side, you'll see just a quick proposal of what we are proposing, the cost would be for the countywide. Jefferson County, we go off of the oldest, or the most recent census data. So you guys might actually have more than 12,833 residents, but that is what we can go off of. So based on the number of households, we can do $6 per household per year. So it would cost the county $76,998 per year, and that covers all the residents of Jefferson County. And since you've been flown before, you probably know that that is basically like one and a half flights. Sometimes one flight per year.
Not even that often.
Not even that, we'll drop you off, and good luck getting back.
I don't remember the ride.
You're not supposed to, so that's good.
Good ride.
What questions can I help answer? If they're difficult ones, Luke will answer.
So the $45 is if you want to be, like, when I go out west, if I was in Wyoming, that would be on me.
So my recommendation, like, on other counties that have our coverage, we have some counties where the residents travel outside of that to work, and so it's a lot of, you know, they're in other counties more than they are in their own. I always recommend to upgrade. It's $45 a year, and it covers your entire family. If somebody only lives in Jefferson County and they never leave Jefferson County, they may not want to upgrade. But yeah, that's on, it's not just if you go out west, it'd be if you're anywhere else in Indiana, outside of the Jefferson County.
But it's out of state, too.
Yes. Yeah, but it would cover you out of state, too, yes. And some people ask me about college-age students, you know, if their address is in Jefferson County, they would have the coverage. However, if their schooling is outside of the county bubble, as I call it, they would want to upgrade as well. Because the flights would only be covered by you guys if they're flown from Jefferson County or an adjacent county, as a part of this proposal. Because we don't typically ask the county to cover the national membership for all households. I've had one county ask how much it would be. It just doesn't, a lot of counties don't have the financial backing to pay the full $45 for every household. So that's why we do a limited coverage like this, where we can offer it a lot cheaper for counties. Other questions to be had?
Yeah. Take it with sort of fund. Take it under advisement, Karen.
Okay.
Yep. You have a chance to look it over.
Yeah, not from at all. My card's in there with my email and my phone number, and you've got it, too, and so. So you guys can just let me know if you have additional questions. And I know that, like, the week of the 18th and 19th, I'm back in Switzerland County and Jackson County, so if I need to stop by, or if you have additional questions, I'd be happy to stop by. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good to meet you. I can get to come out to the airport.
Yeah, come out there. Take a look.
I work tomorrow.
There you go.
Thanks again.
Oh, you're welcome.
John Brunson?
So, ready?
Yep.
All right. We presented to you all back in the fall, so you're ready to go, we're back. Still seeking some funding for this project, we call it our super-overlook project. First page, everybody knows what it looks like now. Kind of an eyesore for our beautiful riverfront. Second page shows you the renderings, what it could look like. The whole idea's been well-received throughout the community. The third page shows our mission statement, shows our total budget for this with inflation. We think we can get it built for $2 million. So far, we're right at $1 million, maybe $1,200,000, maybe $1,200,200,000. And as you can see, the redevelopment commission put in $250,000 to shorten the sweep. We'd love to see the county partner at that same amount that the city has done, and we're chomping at the bit to put this out to bid this spring, summer, so we can start building it late summer, early fall, and have it complete by Regatta of 2023. Speaking of Regatta, this will be built to satisfy all of Regatta's requirements in terms of water and internet, power. So we're at a point now that we're, we're just trying to find another $250,000 to get us to that point where we can go to bid. And we'll, we feel like we've got some grant money heading our way as well, that will put us to a point where we can pay for it all together. And as a backup plan, we've had discussions with the local bank on suspected financing. We seem favorable to that. Looks good.
Down our close, where's your car show at?
I think to John's point, if I may add, that it is a, you know, 365 venue, it's not, you know, it is Regatta-driven with being a replacement, but it's also for a car show, you know, other festivals and activities, and just pure daily use as well. And, you know, the riverfront is, you know, Madison, Indiana, and the gateway to Madison and the state of Indiana, but it's to be used by everybody, so it's not just driven at one group or one interest level, so.
I think we can be a part of this, not only the county residents, I do it myself, so as far as amount, I don't know, but I think we need to take it under advisement and talk about it.
We're getting ready to finalize our ERP framework, and that's something like, a good moment, yeah.
I mean, we're a pressure.
We'll probably, I would, you know, I hate to say we'd have it in two weeks, but I would say the first meeting in May, we should be, we'll have the plan at a point where I think people would be pretty settled on what's going where.
Okay. Should we plan to come back? Would that be?
You can contact us, I always say that, you know, when something comes up, and I'm like, okay. But, I mean, if you want to plan to, we can let you know, okay, well, we just didn't quite make that, but, but good reminder to keep us on task.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. I'll just have to stay attention.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution for consideration of rezoning property located in Deputy, Indiana. I'll read this front page, scare you all to death with all these pages. General ordinance commending the Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance, whereas the Board of County Commissioners has advised that the Jefferson County Plan Commission has to have a public hearing following the giving of required notice on a proposed change to the zone map incorporated by references, reference into the Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance, and whereas said commission has given a favorable recommendation for adoption of a proposed change to the zone map incorporated by reference into the Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance, and whereas this board concurs in the recommendation submitted to it by said commission. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Jefferson, State of Indiana, that the zone map incorporated by reference into the Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance be changed as follows. Pass Exhibit A.
So the, the plan is, there's a deputy next to the family dollar, they want to put a Dollar General. And so they contacted the adjacent landowners, and there was one that was against it, but it was family dollar, and they really didn't want the competition. They didn't, so the people living around it didn't have a, didn't have an issue with it, but, so that was the only negative comment. But, so the Board of, the Plan Commission went through the information, and they had the, like, the realtor for the guy that's going to develop it there and answered some questions, but the Plan Commission voted unanimously, so it hasn't accepted the proposed change.
Is this north or the existing?
Mm-hmm.
And that big lot, or big?
I mean- has to have a public hearing following the giving of required notice on a proposed change to the zone map incorporated by references, reference into the Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance, and whereas said commission has given a favorable recommendation for adoption of a proposed change to the zone map incorporated by reference into Jefferson County, Indiana zone, zoning ordinance, and whereas this board concurs in the recommendation submitted to it by said commission. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Jefferson, State of Indiana, that the zone map incorporated by reference into Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance be changed as follows. Exhibit A.
So the, the plan is, there's, out in Deputy next to the Family Dollar, they want to put a Dollar General. And so they contacted the adjacent landowners, and there was one that was against it, but it was Family Dollar, and they really didn't want the competition. They didn't, so the people living around it didn't, didn't have a, didn't have an issue with it. But, so that was the only negative comment. But, so the Board of, the Plan Commission went through the information, and they had the, like, the realtor for the guy that's going to develop it there and answered some questions. But the Plan Commission voted unanimously that it hasn't accept the proposed change.
Is this north or the existing? In that big lot?
I mean, it's, they're, they're cutting out just the part for Dollar General, so they're not, the whole of this, the Baxter property there, they're not doing all of that, they're just the part for the, for the Dollar General. There are other, other than, like, there's another across the road, another business?
The area and Screen Houses across the road.
Yeah, so there's some other businesses in the area. It's not like it's, it's the only one. It is next to the Dollar General, but it's not like it's, it's just the second one. There's some other businesses there as well.
The former Crop Production Services is on the other side of the Dollar General, or the Dollar, Family Dollar, and the Dollar General would be just north.
Josh, he's still meeting.
Yeah, but it's.
Upsets.
Well, like you said, I mean, they sent out, the list is in there. They have one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, there was a number that received the notice, a number that replied back, so they knew when the meeting was. And looking for like LLC, which is the Dollar General, or Family Dollar, was the only one that sent the letter in. They were basically saying, we don't want your competition, so we better let it happen. So, I mean, and this, you know, so this, this just changed the zoning map to change it from, is it light? Low-density residential district R four to highway business. So that was the, the change we shared with you.
Since it came to Jefferson County Planning Commission, and they recommended it, there was no issues with property owners, I'm making a motion. We accept the mending of Jefferson County, Indiana zoning ordinance for the business.
I second that.
Any other discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor, in favor, signify by a high. I'll get it out in a minute.
So, can we take a mic?
Yes.
All right, so we have tried to, although we haven't settled on every single line item, but we can give, like, big categories on the draft, what do we call it, ARP spending plan. And so, in the big categories, we have some administrative expenses, and that may change slightly, because I'm not sure what our financial guy is going to charge, but I've got something in there. So it's twenty-five thousand for that, for responding to negative economic impacts of COVID-19. We've got one million, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Premium pay for essential workers, and this may still change slightly, but it's about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Provision for government services to the extent of reduction in, in revenue, and that's basically what the financial advisor said, is that because we receive less than ten million dollars, we could basically throw all of it into that category, but we've decided we're going to try to help some others along the way. So there are some things, and a lot of that is for equipment for the highway department, for. So I think we had equipment for the highway department, we had some equipment for the sheriff's office, equipment for the EMA, and some of that included a potentially, potentially, a potential new building, line one-one for, like, radios and things like that, equipment. I'm trying to think of the others that I had. We have it there. We need definitely to do some cybersecurity improvements at, in the county, so we've got funding in there. We're in the stages of beginning to put out a request for, a request for qualifications for an airport planning study, looking at the old J, APG airfield. We've got some money set aside to do our own, to do some stormwater management study. We really needed ordinance and some of the, the initial documentation or ordinances to get started on stormwater management. Because right now, there's, if someone were to come in, I noticed on the drawing for Dollar General, they don't have any stormwater management in the, and every time we do that, I think we see what happens with Crook Creek Creek. I mean, everything that gets built that doesn't have a place to catch the rainwater that's going to roll, roll off those places that no longer can absorb it, well, we end up with problems. So some money in there for that. But we have some set aside for some matching grant, just to kind of allow us, because there's going to be some things that, that could come out of the airport study, that could come out of the stormwater management, so we want to set some aside there. We got halfway through my table and I quit. And then water sewer broadband infrastructure. So in there, planning to give, and it really is, is based on the number of users of the water companies in the county, providing funds for that. I'm going to read the numbers. So, City of Madison, around nine-hundred thousand dollars. Dupont, we cut that back, was three-seventy-five. Kent, two, two-seventy-five. Canons, two-twenty-five. Rikers Ridge, did we say one-fifty? The town of Hanover has asked for some funds for meters, so a hundred thousand there. We did increase the amount of stormwater management to the city study to two-hundred thousand, and then we put, I think we upped to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for broadband plans and projects, because that's something we know we need to look at, and so we're working on that. When I mentioned the responding to negative economic impact, so a lot of those are fire departments, county and at a certain level, city, some, but not as much as the counties, and some of the festivals that are around, some nonprofits, we've got some set aside for that. So that's kind of the, the split that we've come up with to try to help, help a lot of people with the money that the federal government has given us. So we've got to make sure that our legal counsel is okay with these. I think once the, like you said, once the, the financial guy said, well, you can really use all six-point-two for whatever you wanted, and, I mean, you had to contract them, obviously, because you didn't have to do some of these others, but we thought that was not a good idea. So. But that's where we stand right now. I hope to, I'll get that, now that we're okay with it. I'm going to send it off to our legal counsel, make sure they're okay with it, and then we'll get another step closer to finalizing.
And then we have to report by the Capitol.
Yep, yep. So we'll do that at the next meeting, and then we'll be able to submit our report to the federal government that, okay, this is that we're going to spend this, these funds. Hopefully, they don't come back and say, well, we've thought about it, you're only getting half of it. We have asked that question, and they say that's not to the federal government, to our legal counsel, and they say, that's not going to happen. Okay. But, so there's kind of that presentation, and just wanted to let folks know where we stood on that, and we've been trying to find ways to do it, so we, like I said, so we help a lot of different folks in the county.
Spread it around. Everybody try to get a little help, some help, some help.
And I think, you know, for a lot of them, you know, will we fund, be able to fund a complete project? No, but we're going to be able to put a substantial amount on a project that will help them, especially fire departments who, you know, twenty-twenty, their livelihood and their fundraising.
Taken away.
Yeah, with a zero, so we'll try and help some of those. Same thing with some of the festivals and things like that.
And, okay, we'll continue to work on that. And next is a nine-one-one interlocal agreement.
So the advisory board has gone through this. We've reviewed it with all the, with Hanover and the City of Madison and ourselves, and tried to, we tried to clean it up from, so the differences from the previous one to this one, you know, there's, there's several committees identified in the interlocal, but it wasn't, you know, the, the duties or the responsibilities of those committee, committees was kind of thrown here, there, and everywhere. So we tried to bring it together under those committees. And so that's, that's kind of the biggest change that was there, tried to clean up some of the language a little bit, nothing, nothing huge there. One thing that has been included is, so every once in a while, there is some additional funds remaining, and, and so, in, in the, which one?
The four-zero-zero-one.
Four-zero-zero-one, which, if you guys know what that means, great, it's the.
In the city, county, Hanover.
It's not the, not the state one, it's the other one.
Yeah.
So sometimes, you know, we thought, well, could we use, there's no sense continuing to build funds. I mean, we're, we're going to allow, Suzie, if she's got a project to do, we're not going to bother them, but if there's some at the end that's just left over, why don't we back to the, to, to each group? So that's what the board decided. I think, I think that's fine. You know, we've said that, you know, if you've got projects that you need to spend that money on, well, that's probably more important than giving it back to us. And we said, do it it that way, rather than trying to change budgets each year with, because that would be a moving target. And so since we have to do budgeting so early, I figured that was a better way to do it.
That's where we are with that.
Yeah. So we do need to sign it. So, in the event of handling, I move that we accept the interlocal agreement as submitted by the nine-one-one advisory board as presented, get it signed, and continue on with what's going on.
Who's going to serve on all these committees?
Well, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's not us.
Well, I mean, just like the technical system advisory committee. If you've got something in here that's down, you don't have time to gather.
Oh, no, no, that would, they would be looking at, if, if you want to upgrade some, some equipment, so you start that process about evaluating what's out there, what, what should be used, which, you know, maybe we don't want to use. I think right now, we're going to, I don't know, it's a little eight-hundred megahertz paging system, right?
For the fire departments, they want to be able to page.
So it's different than the UHF system.
Right.
So trying to improve that. So trying to, this committee would look at, what's the best way to handle that? You know, and then they would make a recommendation to the advisory board, and then we, we'd evaluate that. So, so that's the.
It just, it just seems like there's just too many committees.
Well, I, I don't know that all the committees are going to meet all the time. Some of them do, some of them do, I think Dave said, on the police, they, they talk, but it's not.
I just kind of just called the other two members and asked.
Right, so that's about the extent. Is there an issue? No. All right, then, and that may be the extent of it. We're just trying to have some guidelines for these committees, should, should something come up. Okay, we've got a committee of people that are, that will look at that.
What's your thoughts on it? You're the ones got to live with it.
Well, like Sheriff said, if, if there's a problem between dispatch officers or whatever, we talk. We don't get together in a committee. The technical committee, they're not sitting in there every day and knowing what goes down, what goes on. They have no clue. It's, you know, what happens at the moment. I don't know, it just seems like to me there's a lot of committees, or a lot of people wanting, a few people wanting some of these committees to, not micromanage, but there's too many irons in, in the fire, in my opinion, but I just do what, you know, what I need to do. I, I've, I've done this for five years, and I've gotten along fine without, I've done it on my own, pretty much, you know. I know people who know people who can help me, you know, like, that's how we got our radio vendors and our, you know, our quotes for our equipment and stuff, so.
So I have a motion. Think about it. I think, I just think there's too many committees on it.
Well, in reality, there's been no additional committees added to this interlocal as there was before. The only thing we did is try to put in the responsibilities for these committees a little clearer than what was in the original, or the last go-around for the nine-one-one interlocal.
Thirty-five. I just think we get too many people involved to, to understand the day-to-day operation of what goes on.
But this, this isn't really a day-to-day interaction of these committees. It's, as they look at new technology, there's a group that, that's going to help in, in, in doing that. And so, well, Suzie said she knows people who knows people, and they know people too. So.
I'm just uncomfortable with it, so that's just my stance on it. I'm sorry.
So, I mean, why, why not in the nine-one-one committee meetings that you bring up these, these objections?
Because it took, I've thought about it for a while, and we've never really had the actions of the committees in the time that I've been director. They're just now coming to light. People are, other people are wanting them to be formed and used.
Well, in the future, we need to bring those up at those meetings, or something needs to be said. This is not the time to bring up objections. Because really, the nine-one-one board made this recommendation, right?
Right, well, and apparently, a lot of people agreed to go ahead and go with it, you know, and that was the board, so.
But I, I wouldn't think the board would have, against your wishes, gone forward with it.
So is this a table item to the next meeting, or?
Well, it won't be tabled to the next meeting, because the nine-one-one board won't meet before our next meeting. So it'll have to meet later.
Is that what you want to do? Look at it? It's, like I said, I've stated mine. Concerns on it, but I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with concerns. I just wish they had been brought up prior to the board going forward with presenting it to the three entities to, for signature. We spent several meetings going through it. Thought we'd reached an agreement among the board. The board said, let's go forward and get it signed, and now when we go to get it signed, well, there's issues. I mean, that's, we worked, worked through those issues, but that's kind of waste of time in the meetings if we're not going to bring up the concerns during the meetings. That's the whole purpose of those boards.
Is that all right? To me, what is.
Well, like I said, I mean, the.
thing I'll just bring up a little bit here on Bridge Six, the preliminary plans on it are eighty percent complete. So we're still moving along. That's a replacement to be, it's still a year out. So that's kind of where it needs to be at this point. I think I forwarded an email. If I didn't, we'll catch up with you now. I know I've had this sitting on my desk here for just a little while. On an unofficial detour for State Road two fifty, they're going to be working on a couple of bridges. That'll be out in Lancaster Township. So that'd be between seven and State Road three, which will, they'll have their official detours. I was going to look at it. These dates are going to be between August the first of twenty twenty two and October the thirtieth of twenty twenty two. They'll be doing two bridge deck overlay projects. The unofficial detour that they have mapped will actually encompass two of our county roads. One of those is going to be Little Rest Barn Road and that's going to run from State Road two fifty all the way to County Road one thousand and County Road one thousand from Little Rest Road to State Road seven. And the other one will be for Boyd Road from State Road two fifty to State Road seven. Like we've kind of discussed before, we don't really pick the routes. We kind of look for where they think the local traffic's going to go and what it's going to carry. I know we video the roads as well as N dot videos roads and they kind of help recoup for any damages, see if they are inclined or, as those damages are recognized and see what goes on. Jake Gill Road's in very good condition. Little Rest is already in need of some improvements. Maybe have to go down with score well, community crossings or something in the future on that one. But that would be something to deal with after the fact. So I would need your also approval for that.
You okay with those?
Yes.
I mean, you let them out.
That's where they're going to go. That, that's what's going to get, that's what's going to get the traffic. And if they're going to get tore up, this one allows us to go after the compensation we can get if those are tore up. If they're not signed, we carry the entire load. It's basically, this is basically our insurance policy. It's the easiest way to look at it.
Better do it, huh?
Pretty much.
You waiting, need to make a motion?
Nope.
All three of them.
Right, Sarah.
Bob on one. I'm going to make a motion to accept the N Dots unofficial detour, State Road two fifty and three, August first, twenty second, October thirtieth, twenty second.
Second time. Any other discussion? More names? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I shouldn't tell this all myself, but once upon a time I did sign for a culvert by the name of Fred Flintstone. That was long before I was superintendent. They just needed an autograph. I got it, but I signed my name.
Were you called on it?
Good luck finding that paper.
Did someone call you on it or?
No.
Like rocking bankments or something?
I need to call. I need to see what you just, they wanted in the hole, so I guess I'll take care of that. Quick update, I want to go over all the details we've been doing as you've seen by some of our road closures and what we've been doing, trying to get culverts punched in and ditches taken care of. In the most storm cleanups and other distractions, the weather likes to throw at me. And that's my best term for those, those distractions and interruptions.
Should he have?
They are on. We do still have some on. Yep.
I believe it's Saturday.
I don't, I don't see that happening at that thirty two degree low.
No, I don't think.
It should be impossible to stick to the road and Bobby's going to make sure it all goes away.
Yep.
Make sure that happens. I told the guy at the service in the furnace today that, and he's like, do what? I said, that's what somebody told me. I said, I don't, I don't see it happening. Today, we did have a safety training and it was for work zone safety. Working with LTAP, as you guys know, I've worked with LTAP and Purdue University and that local technical assistance program that every state has and we're very fortunate to have Purdue University take care of ours. They are, they've done an extremely good job. Todd Morrison came down and they've been doing more of the trains in the house, which is very beneficial because then I can get all the staff trained. It's not me or the superintendent or the foreman going to get in train and pass that along to the crews. They can get that directly first hand and it went very, very well today. Several of them was glad that they came down. Todd was impressed that we knew what we knew. And I told him, we've really got a person veteran staff that's been doing it for quite a while and, and we've kind of learned some of it. And we've all kind of been able to improve our game, so to speak, and trying to keep everybody safe and healthy. And we want to keep those few of the thousands in ours because there are about a hundred and thirty five, I think, a year is what they said on in work zone accidents.
You got a bunch of them there, but other train?
Oh, yeah. I've, I've got a few going.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of the area.
Yeah, Kyle, bring that one back up. I'm going to bring that one up. And the other thing I wanted to mention kind of going into that was April the eleventh through the fifteenth is National Work Zone Awareness. I know we're all out there running roads and we all get frustrated when we're having to get slowed down or go from seventy to fifty five on the interstate. And I know, you heard just the other day, I mean, somebody was luckily giving me a heads up that there was an accident on sixty five. I pulled it up on my phone. Luckily, I was far enough away I could jump on seventy four. It's a little bit longer ride home, but in that instance, it was fifty minutes fast. Just having those things up and I know that was close to a work zone. I don't know if that was necessary or default, but we hear about those way too often. One of the things that I had on my notes here, so that kind of fit pretty good here with the funding that may be coming available for some equipment, was I've been getting several quotes put together for trucks and loaders and graders and things because I know before we know what it'd be, how to be working on those budget numbers. So I wanted to make sure I've got some solid numbers going forward for that. And that's always, I'm always looking more and more towards equipment prices and quotes when I'm feeling pain of equipment being down. I've got the great all right now in Indianapolis. That's part of my reason for being up there. Luckily, it was a wiring harness. As we were telling them what was going on, we got it up there. Luckily, the harness itself is covered under warranty. So that was very helpful. We do have a dump truck that's down right now that we can't get figured out. So it's a ULC. Hopefully they figure it out. Of course, he gets there and I get a message. What was this truck actually doing? I said, that means it's not acting up for you right now, doesn't it?
It always happens that way, doesn't it?
That is nature to be. That's the second time this truck's done it.
Of course, like, you know, when you get it back, what'll happen?
Yeah, it doesn't last thirty minutes.
Right back to where we were.
Hey, you want to come all the way back down here and see what this is? But that's really kind of the quick and the dirty of what we've been doing. It's been mundane, just punching in culverts and cleaning out ditches and cleaning up trees and hoping it doesn't snow. And the rain can stop for a little bit as well. I thought that just in case I need it. That's all I've got unless you guys have questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
I'll try.
We've got Dave over here. Hi, Dave.
Afternoon.
How are you, Sarah?
Tired. Chief and I had a long trip today. Not much to give you. We did have a drug raid yesterday. Combination of Jefferson, Scott, Jennings County. Four were arrested. We got, what, a hundred grams, hundred grams of meth. And I, I mean, we had to get our enclosed trailer to take all the stolen property out of the trailer. So, but it was a good bust. And I know the community out around there came up to thank us quite a bit. But no, we're, other than that, it's just, we're moving forward. It should keep rolling. So, you know, we just went through our budget just a couple of days ago. Everything seems to be, you know, it's welling in. We're not over that we can tell any. And we left two in the academy. They're what, halfway through roughly?
Yeah, I got it. May thirteenth, they come back, so.
And we're looking to hire one as a laddo. And then I'm going to open up the other detective's job and we're going to see if I fill in that in the next two to three weeks. So far, everything's running pretty smooth. Do you have any questions for me?
Anything, let's say, that you weren't expecting in the jail inspection report? I didn't have a chance to look at it. Anything?
Not the jail inspection report.
Okay.
No. Now, in state board accounts, there was just one thing. The Emily Trust Fund, that's been messed up since twenty fifteen. When I took over sheriff, we tried to get Canteen to see runs that. Our balance with the bank is fine. But Canteen's balance is like four hundred thousand dollars over what should be in there. And it, and it's a matter of just through the years, they haven't adequately taken out inmates that were moved or released and that type of thing. The money, it's really not there. I talked to the inspector. I have, we had, we've had trouble for the last two and a half years getting Canteen to come in and audit it because of COVID. Well, I got him to come in this week. So we're figuring, we'll have a straight down in about three weeks. Because we still, we still have to keep civil papers going. We still have to keep all that going. So, you know, it just puts more work on our staff. But it's nothing that concerns me. And he said, you know, I mean, he, he sat there because I did, you know, you do a sit down with them at the end and, and everything else is good. Commissary's good, all that. Jail inspection is the same two things. Overcrowed.
Too many, too many of those.
And not enough staff.
Too many of those.
It's, it's the same thing. Other than that, you know, I mean, we totally changed the whole prospect of how the, the whole purpose of how the jails ran and operated and everything from categorizing each inmate to their complaint process, you know, and we track everything, you know. I'm sure you, you've heard, but I've gone from, I contract out the medical, and I've gone from one nurse, we now have two nurses, two part-time nurses, and a mental health counselor. So, you know, we've expanded on that. So, you know, everything seems to be going pretty well, you know. I, I can't sleep at night still, but I got a hundred and seventy something people I have to worry about. So, but other than that, unless you have any further questions. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steel and bricks going up.
Appreciate you, Josh.
Oh, Bobby wanted to say about fifty percent on the jail construction. So it's going pretty well.
Nice to have a, not a terrible winter where you could still get some things done.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're working hard up there. They're getting some work done for us.
Yeah, next month, the steel cells are supposed to come in and be, start to set in place, which will be.
That'd be something if, you want to see something, they drop them in with a boom. And then, once they get them all in, then they go in and start doing their seaming, welding, whatever they call it.
Yeah, yeah. Stitch weld the ones on top to the ones on the bottom. Yeah.
It'd be pretty impressive. So.
And that'll be quick.
Yeah. Maybe not quick enough.
No, as quick as we can hope for.
Then, then we're going to have to figure out how to move all the inmates, which we're already planning on how to do that. So we pretty much have that feeling.
I watched Star Trek the other night.
You're not going to, I wish I could beam them from one spot to the other, but I don't think we can do it.
Maybe we can get one of those body scanners that does more than just scan the body, but does transport.
They'll be transported, not the way we're.
Down there, they got to fly in if they had a mess at the end.
But we'll get them over there.
Thanks.
Detroit lead?
Yeah.
He said he's sorry he had to step out. He didn't have anything specific to report. So no news is good news.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience?
Very quickly.
Steve?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, and I told you this earlier, but we are having an RDA meeting April twenty ninth in New Albany at ten o'clock, Pinewood, Pineview Government Center. It's the commissioner's meeting room. Contrary, I don't know if you've heard it, but I've heard in Washington County, we've already spent money in Madison. We have not gotten the first nickel yet. We're waiting on a grant agreement. Supposedly, the draft of the grant agreement came through yesterday. So we hope to be able to sign the grant agreement on April twenty ninth. And we have submitted some proposals to the I E D C. They've approved, I think, twelve of them by my memory. I think it's about twelve.
That would be the twelve projects that were, made the cat right.
Yeah.
I think there were just twelve of them.
And they've approved all those. So we're just waiting for the I E D C to.
And it's in the email today. I think that they're looking for, looking to, look at other organizations perhaps to get some other funding to finish the other projects that were in the, the list that was presented or presented to the RDA. Nothing, nothing sure, but just to see if there's other funding out there that might help.
Yes. And, and we were told that they were going to do it. I E D C was going to go across the hallway and, you know, now they have said that it's on your back now.
They started looking into that and went, hmm, can we buy more than we can chew?
And we will not get the fifty million dollars just given to us and we'll put it in the bank. No, it's going to come and, you know.
I think, I think that it'll be interesting to see because most times the government has been handing money down. They say, oh, no, no, we're not, not going to do it that way. And then after a little bit, they're like, just take it.
Well, we hope they do that, but I.
Well, I know, but, you know, I mean.
But everything's going well. It's just going slow.
Well, it's fifty million dollars, you know.
The I E D C, I think is, and this is kind of the feedback we got, that they're, they're feeling the pressure from all of the regions. And a lot of the regions aren't fully prepared for what they, even if they got five million or ten million. And so they've been asking a lot of questions. There's been a lot of back and forth about that. We think we're in a good place. They told us we're in a good place. So, you know, if we get that grant agreement, we can start the process. And those funds have to be obligated by, I think, July two thousand twenty three. I think that's what they said. So we appreciate their support. Hopefully this is the beginning.
What time's that meeting? Ten?
It starts at ten o'clock. and we have submitted some proposals to the IEDC. They've approved, I think, 12 of them by my memory. I think it's about 12.
That would be the 12 projects that were made the cut, right? I think there were just 12 of them.
And they've approved all those, so we're just waiting for the IEDC to...
And it's in the emails today, I think that they're looking for, looking to look at other organizations, perhaps, to get some other funding to finish the other projects that were in the list that was presented, or presented to the RDA. Nothing, nothing sure, but just to see if there's other funding out there that might help.
Yes, and, and we were told that they were going to do it. IEDC was going to go across the hallway, and, you know, now they have said that it's on your back now.
They started looking into that and went, "Hmm, we buy more than we can chew."
And we will not get the $50 million just given to us and we'll put it in the bank. No, it's going to come and, you know...
I think, I think that, it'll be interesting to see, because most times the government has been handing money down. They say, "Oh, no, no, we're not going to do it that way." And then after a little bit, they're like, "All right, just take it, we'll..."
Well, we hope they do that, but I...
I know, but, you know, I mean...
But everything's going well, it's just going slow.
Well, it's $50 million, you know?
The IEDC, I think, is right, and this is kind of the feedback we got, that they're, they're feeling the pressure from all of the regions, and a lot of the regions aren't fully prepared for what they, even if they got $5 million or $10 million. And so they've been asking a lot of questions, and there's been a lot of back and forth about that. We think we're in a good place. They told us we're in a good place. So, you know, if we get that grant agreement, we can start the process. And those funds have to be obligated by, I think, July 2023? I think that's what they said. So, we appreciate your support. Hopefully, this is the beginning.
What time's that meeting, 10?
It starts at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Nope. Okay. Hi, Richard.
Howdy. I'm back. You were discussing 911, and I brought back memories about two years ago when I was here. The misconception that law enforcement has and is required to respond to 911 calls. That is not true, you know, it's for the safety of the community. And I wish people would know that difference. And the other thing is...
I mean, have you seen, have you seen them not respond?
No way.
I mean, I, so you're telling us that, and I think, was it, was it the Supreme Court that said they didn't have to respond?
The Supreme Court has ruled that law enforcement does not have to respond to 911 calls.
But have you, have you seen that happen? I mean, I guess that's, that would be my concern, if there were cases that they weren't responding. I'm pretty sure they responded.
No, but they've been sued because they didn't respond, and they cannot be sued, because Stoneman, the school shooting in Florida, they took the judge less than five minutes. The Supreme Court has ruled law enforcement is there for the community's safety. On 911, it was not for individuals, it was for the community. And people have a wrong concept of what it is. Now, they tried to get there and everything, but they should know, if they can't show up, they can't show up. And the other thing is, we mentioned last time about a solar farm, which no one knows anything about except you, people that mentioned it apparently. And I started checking into that. I went to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I gave you copies of what they said they'd never heard of. And so that's kind of a dead issue, except I gave them a lot of questions of which they couldn't answer, so.
But right now, there is nothing in the zoning ordinance about solar. We have said if they come to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission has said this, that they will treat it as an auxiliary building, so they'll have the same setbacks.
They'll have to be, right. They've pretty well explained that and what is that.
And right now, we are going through the updating of the ordinances, and that's going to be kind of, we're going to do solar and wind before the rest of them and try to get something in place to address this. Because, I mean, we hear rumors that things are going on, but we don't, nobody who's, at least... So, people may put it, be putting in solar farms, but they don't think right now that they have to come to the Plan Commission? And so they're just going on with it. So, has there been applications to the Plan Commission for it? No. But are they going in? I mean, we heard...
There was a lot of problems with the solar, large solar farms, because I looked into it since last time, and they have a real problem. The panels catch on fire on the private solar, on the houses. Fire departments have a real problem with that, and I don't know what it is, but it has been reported that they have several problems if solar panels catch fire or cause a fire. The other thing is, this is a topic I've been here for a couple of years now. As of this year, 65% of all the counties in the United States has a Second Amendment preservation or sanctuary law on the books, and 11 states have it now. So, I think the time that we had that. Oh, speaking of zoning, your illustrious president has edicted in his infrastructure bill that your zoning will now require to be equity form. I don't know if you've seen that yet, but it's in his big bill, his $1 trillion debt, I guess it was. But I don't know what he means by equity, but he might want to try to figure out what equity means to him. But the Second Amendment Sanctuary Bill, I think, is what we need to get moving on. 11 states have it now. The Luskeris News, as usual, does not report facts. They said that Missouri passed a, they did pass a sanctuary, Second Amendment. It's rough, $50,000 fine for any public employee and jail time if they helped the federal government enforce federal laws. And the news reported that they'd been sued by the federal government. They were not sued by the federal government. They were sued by St. Louis County, who tried to match Chicago under murder rate, I think. But that's the only lawsuit that happened. So, that's the only two things I had, is I'd like to see that passed here. And as I say, the other, and I also, I, when you was at the Planning Commission, right? So you realize that I'm going to see, put out a, a wind turbine for my farm. Didn't I come up? I'm sure it did. But I got the answer from, from the manette that says that she gave me setbacks and the rulings weren't, so I'm good to go, and I, I'm going to, because I've been saying the only thing that's going to stop that DAM wind out there where I'm sitting is to put me up a windmill. So that, I told my wife for a year, that's the only way that wind's going to stop blowing on that.
Once you put it up, then it'll stop blowing.
It's fierce, and I figured the one way to stop it is I'll put me up a windmill.
Get a lot of blowing in the little...
I already have one for my pond, because when I first moved out, there are fighting algae and weeds and everything for all the time. And then I found out that they got the windmills that put aeration in. I've got to correct one in the county according to a next VNR officer, Tommy Stoll, Tony, so. You know, that's all I had, so let's move on to Second Amendment preservation. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Nobody out there is a buddy?
Nope.
Okay. Dave?
So, we've got a request for proposal to go out on the stormwater management ordinance and setting all that stuff up. We talked to the Plan Commission just to let them know what we're planning. They, they were, as long as they found out they weren't doing anything with it, they were okay with it. But we're just trying to let them know, mainly because the, right now, there's any stormwater management language is in the zoning or the subdivision ordinances. It's about three lines, I think, as I've been told. So there's a lot more to it. So they'll just reference this ordinance from those, and this will allow us to have some constraints when people are going to develop something where you need some sort of stormwater management in the process. And, you know, there are, there have been some requests for the county to do something about basically creeks in the property, but we can't get off the road to do that. If they want it, they'll have to petition the county to make it a regulated drain, and then, you know, there will be some fees assessed, and then there will be some funds that we can go in and correct those things. I think we'll also make, you know, because a lot of this is just what we saw in Crooked Creek. People have built stuff. That place where that used to absorb water, no longer absorbs water, and it just gets dumped into some creek or some ditch, and now people, the people downstream or down creek end up paying the penalty because of that. So, will it fix it overnight? No, but at least we'll start heading in the right direction. I will, I've got a draft of a request for qualification for people to study some potential uses for the airfield out of JPG. So I'll send that so you guys can look at it, and we'll try maybe the first of next month to have that ready to go and get, get those firms out there that do those sorts of studies a chance to give us what their qualifications are, and then we'll pick someone and go forward with that. Probably pick something we never even thought was out there as a possible use, but that'll be great. Because, I think, it's a good thing.
Do I have anything?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, alright. I think our next residential treatment training meeting is April 17th here. Same deal. Good luck again.
It's a Sunday.
That's Easter.
Oh, that's right, that's why I thought you were leaving.
You're on the right, you're here. Here we go. 21st. 21st. Over there, Commissioner meeting over here. You're all invited, 4 o'clock. 3 o'clock if you want to come and shoot the breeze for a while. Me and Jim. My deal might be down from Attorney General office. And interrupting, so that's open.
21st?
Is that it? Anybody else? Yeah?
I do not have anything. We have been busy with tax bills.
That's happy times.
Oh, yeah. We're helping everyone we can.
Alright.
I did leave out one comment.
Nope.
On zoning. In 19, I gave a copy to you. The reason you're allowed to do zoning is, was more or less a, not really, well, I'd call it corrupt in this day and age. Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, 1926, said they wouldn't be able to get away with this zoning 50 years ago or 100 years ago, but, and he sat down and rewrote the complaint against, on a zoning lawsuit. He rewrote it, and then they passed it that you could zone 6 to 3 after he rewrote the complaint. And it was an interesting read, 11 pages long. Amber versus Yucca or something like that. And it was where he, he decided to, and as he put into the complaint and so forth, for the general welfare. And then, so they passed it, so that's how you got zoning. Just as a little tidbit of old research I've done in the last two weeks. Outside of that, see, a couple of weeks, I guess?
Yeah.
See if you pass my sanctuary yet.
Police can have some public meetings.
It's summertime's coming, you can have a public meeting.
We can have them again now.
Yep. There's no restrictions.
We are planning that.
Okay.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh. All of them gave us a "aye." Thank you, everybody, for coming.